Good morning again, welcome to the Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors Special Session Meeting regards to the budget for FY26. Roll call please.
Kurt Knob.
Here.
Leyland.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Paul.
Please join in a moment of silence to reflect on today's actions. Please stand and join for the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a motion to, uh, the agenda is proposed. So move. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On the same side, motion carries. Item two, hearing on proposed Black Hawk County budget for the year ending June 30th, 2026. Start by saying, thank you. This is my third budget. Um, yeah, it's high flies when you're having fun. This, this is felt, this on top of strategic planning, on top of all of, all of doing our own bits of work as supervisors and else, elsewhere. This has been all in, pretty productive and constructive budget. Want to thank Michelle for all of the scenarios we've thrown your way, fielding those and getting us answers best you can on stuff. I know that it is a lot, a lot of work that falls on your plate as well as others. We couldn't be at a spot where we've got, I think, such a strong budget without their work. I appreciate the fact that we have department heads come and speak to the board throughout the process. Seeing other governmental bodies who are not as transparent, that's not necessarily a knock, but it is a nod to our folks and our process that we hear the needs of the department, we balance those needs with our abilities to fund those, and we really do do a top-notch job of creating an open budget process, even to the point where a couple of weeks ago, the letter went out and we had what almost felt more like a town hall than a, than a budget meeting. I'm actually pretty proud of the fact that we were able to have that open up conversation with real information, real insight, and a good exchange of perspectives. So, it's a lot of work. Appreciate, not every governmental entity is able to absorb scheduled salary increases and for their overall increase to be less than that scheduled salary increase. That alone is impressive. So, shout out to everybody on the board, shout out to Michelle, department heads, staff, who helped to provide all the necessary information to get those numbers, to make sure that they're right as we're moving forward. So, with that, an entertaining motion to receive and place so.
Typically, we need, now the introductions of that, introduces everyone in the room.
Oh.
Everyone that's participating.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. I was like, wow, you really, you really wanted me to like.
When you go to the comments by the board, you really get hit it already. Now that was the introduction, so good. But it's, that's what's typical process.
So, so am I supposed to introduce to see this?
No, you don't have to do.
I maybe I wanted to pay attention last time.
Somewhat like we do in full sessions, like where everybody.
We'll go ahead and start with the introductions of board members.
Justin Brand, county supervisor.
Chris Schwartz, county supervisor.
Davis Hall, county supervisor.
Linda Leyland, county supervisor.
Rich Kurt Knob, county supervisor.
Karen Scholwalter, county auditor.
Michelle Wheatner, county finance director.
Mike Tryon, assistant county engineer.
Kathy Nicholas, county engineer.
Sammy Smith, county reporter.
Brian Brennan, assistant county engineer.
Hannah Sessom, HR director.
Mike Henderson, director of Black Hawk County Conservation.
Candy Witt, marketing coordinator.
Aliu, IP director.
You all live as well.
Roy Giving, facilities director.
Linda Hansman, county treasurer.
Yolanda Lovless, director of Black Hawk County Veterans Affairs.
Very good. Now, while it's a motion to receive and place on file, the proof publication. Notice a public hearing is published on April 8th, 2025 in the Water Goosey Falls Courier and April 10th, 2025. So move.
Second.
So motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 On the same side, motion carries. Item C, reading of the Black Hawk County salaries schedule for FY26 for elected officials.
Supervisor FY26, forty-eight thousand four hundred and forty. Auditor, one hundred and eight thousand eight hundred and forty-three twenty-one cents. Sheriff, one hundred and sixty-six thousand six hundred and seventy-one seventy-nine cents. Treasurer, one oh eight eight four three two one. Recorder, one oh eight eight four three two one. And attorney, one seventy-six two five twenty-four.
Thank you.
Let me just mention, really quick, one quick comment. So, the boards, it is rounded off a little bit. So that is slightly less than 10% based on the sheet that, but you're welcome, you can accept it as it is. It's eight dollars is basically from what I had from the previous fiscal year that's listed here. So, you can certainly set it as that, or you can set it as a.
Do you need the slide? Do you need the slide?
I just don't want it to mismatch.
If it should be, I thought I used. You changed me, so what do you want it to be?
So, what I sent last week was that their current salary is forty-four thousand, forty-four dollars and nineteen cents. This is a historical document that started back in the auditor's office from decades ago. So I, it's kind of our point of reference. And then times 10% would be forty-eight thousand four hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty-one cents. So, in the past, we used to round these off, so you can, I just wanted to clarify that. So, you can either up it to the forty-eight thousand four hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty-one cents and it would be a true 10% increase for the board of supervisors, or you can leave it as that and we'll just reflect it as that's what you guys accepted as forty-eight thousand four hundred and forty. But the other ones are all vertically aligned to what we have on file here. I say I want to come back later on and be like, that wasn't really a 10%. Thank you.
Easy enough, uh, easy enough just to leave it, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So leave it forty-eight thousand four hundred and forty dollars annually per supervisor. Alright.
It's a dozen eggs right there.
Uh, presentation by Michelle Wheatner.
Am I sorry, did we have a motion to receive and place in file through the hub? Did I miss it?
Yes, we did.
Because I was.
We did, we did.
We did, we did all that, yeah.
As long as it's done, that's all that matters. Okay, um, I, I don't know if we have public online, but there are none in the room this week. So, uh, I will plan to try to make this abbreviated unless you don't want me to. I can talk for two hours if you really want to.
If there's anything to. Well, it's gonna be to the audience.
Well, it's gonna be to the public, it's pretty important. Honestly, we had, I think, surprisingly, there's probably 20 work sessions. So, I think probably everyone in this room has, understands where we're going. So, and the hearing truly is more for the public. But we will, we'll post the presentation online and, you know, mine's available for questions. So we'll, we'll try and handle it that way. I'm gonna start out with the printouts that should be in your packet. The first one, and these are, the formats are things you're used to seeing all the time. So we have the property tax askings, and this is after the adjustments that you've approved. So I have, there's a 5% reduction in health premiums. And there, we also did not add one, any new positions at all. So we removed the addition of one position to the sheriffs. We also, um, we're kind of tying up some loose ends on some of the personnel. So after all that is done, our total property tax collections increase is 3.7%. So we're below 4% now. The amount is thirty-two million, two hundred and eighty-five thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars. And then how that impacts individual property types. With an urban residential property, your, those taxes would, and I'm just gonna use the percent. I think right now would be an increase of 2.91%. Commercial properties is 1.06%. Industrial properties at 0.9%. Multi-residential at 3.04%. Residential rural is 1.87%. An ag property is at 2.43%. So most of our property types now are below 3%, lower, just to add 3%. I also provided the detailed calculation in your packet. I don't really see a need to go through that. So, I think we will move on to the presentation. So, again, this is a format that you have seen before. So we're going to slide through some of it pretty quickly. I did, just for context, because I get, we get questions about our taxes are so high compared to others. And so last year, I started providing you with statistics about where does Black Hawk County rate rank in the statewide in terms of our population, which you remember, we're, I'm still measuring from the 2020 census. So I'm believing it's at fifth largest. That may slip, it's possible. Then we looked at our assessed and taxable property values, which we are about at sixth. And I'm using, comparing this to the top 10 counties in terms of population. That's where the peers that I'm comparing to. We also looked at TIPS valuation, which Black Hawk County took a jump, and this is for fiscal '25. Comparisons for '26 are not easily available yet, so we'll, you'll see more of that next year. Property taxes, again, we dropped a place for fiscal '25. We went down a place for how much taxes we collect. So although we are fifth largest in population, sixth largest in taxable value, only eighth largest in total property tax collections. We talked about our fund balances, which came up even at the work session this morning. At fiscal '23, we led those top 10 counties in terms of percentage of unassigned fund balance. Certainly not in terms of dollars, Polk County is, you know, many millions. Um, I don't know, four times larger. But in '24, we did drop to a smaller rank, and that will continue as we, because we are choosing to commit what we're defining as excess reserves. I'm not even gonna talk about the law changes. We did have increases in taxable value this year. Our, our growth was 189 million, which generated in addition to 148,455 dollars in general basic levy funds. But because, excuse me, because our growth exceeded 2.75% our general levy then, the rate became capped at $3.46 roughly. That reduced our available 350 revenue, which is the main revenue that we used to pay. That reduced it by 213,000. Rural value increased by 21 million, and we remain well under the $3.95 rural levy cap. You can see the history of our property valuation changes. We already talked about urban rising 3.2% and rural 2.2%. Just a reminder, our residential rolled back, increased slightly by 2.4% making more of a house value taxable in '26 than it was in '25. This slide is probably a helpful one, but proposed budget highlights. For our countywide tax levy at $5.57, 34.59 million. The rural levy at $3.071 cents at 3,694,57, bringing us to the total collections of 38,285,148. Tax asking increases 1.3 billion roughly. And the budget impact to taxpayers. Now this one, the numbers are slightly different than what I showed you in the previous, because this one I've taken back to a flat hundred thousand dollar property just to help citizens calculate their own taxes. So you can see the cost, a hundred thousand dollars of assessed value for an urban residential property would be 264 dollars. Commercial, and I did scale these, so commercial property, I used an example of a half million dollar property, 2,152 dollars. Industrial, a million dollar property would pay 4,659. The rural residential, 440 dollars. Again, because they've got that rural levy added. And then the ag property, a hundred thousand dollar value at 685.
You used a couple of different numbers than I think what we have on the sheet, right? On these sheets, did you say, I thought it's.
The, the sheets that I handed out earlier are adjusted to show the increase in assessed value. And so when I calculated '25, I had to put an increase in value.
Yeah.
So I kept that in those sheets. This takes it just to a flat.
Yeah.
To, just to make it easier for a citizen to maybe calculate the impact on their own property. That, that's all you're seeing there.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Our countywide levy is made up of three separate levies. That general levy that we talked about at 3.46, the general supplemental at roughly a dollar eighty-six, and debt service at 24 cents. Then for the rural property owners, they have the three that we already talked about, but then we have to add in the rural levy of $3.70. Our levy trends are really very flat. So our total unincorporated rate, the rural rate declined almost 4 cents, while the urban countywide rate increased 4 cents. Now we're gonna talk about some charts that we, we really haven't seen much before. So expenses by classification, uh, our total operating expenses are 80.79 million. Salaries make up 50% of that, increase of 3% primarily due to pay increases. Operating expenses rose 20, or are 22.3% or 353,000. That's an increase of 2%. Lot of it's, some of the same things we have talked about before, jail medical contract. I think now we've pretty much got that all incorporated in the budget. Our debt service, though, we did bump up this year, 12%. Last year, incidentally, it fell 12%. So we are putting it basically back to the '25 level to fund capital projects. Our capital expenses, though, we're projecting a decrease of 4%. And that is, a good share of that is because ARPA, how we're budgeting for ARPA projects, you will see those decline particularly after '26. So, then if we include transfers in that, our total amount would be 101 million almost. So then rural fund expenditures by program, most of that is the sheriff's patrol. Then we also have, and that's 35, 35 and a half percent. Dispatch centers, about 10% of that budget. Planning and zoning is, while it's 2% of the expenses, it's actually zero to the taxpayer because we also receive revenue for that. The county libraries are 3 and a half percent of it. The transfer to secondary roads is almost half, 47.8%. And that pretty much gets used for road construction, some maintenance too. And then other services that would be Northeast Highway Hazer's Response Crew, EMA, those kind of things. All that is only 1.2% of that levy. I've also given you the expenditures by service area. We've looked at that before, sometimes people want to know how much do we spend on physical health and social services, for example. 12% of our budget, which, I don't know, find my cheat sheet here. Check that on top, just a minute ago. Well, anyway, yeah, public safety and legal services remains our largest category at 32.8%. And most of that is for the jail services that we provide. Roads are surprisingly only 10 and a half percent. Environment education, 4.3, government services, 3.8. Capital projects is still a very large category at 21.8%. Debt service at 4.7, and administration, 10.1. I also have a slide that talks about expenditures by department, which just kind of shows you the same thing as the pie chart, just includes the raw numbers for your reference. Revenues by program area, our, most people assume that our property taxes are the largest source of revenue we have. And I should maybe add a different slice of this pie, because on here, taxes show up at 56%. But there's 4 million of that, that's local option taxes. And there's also about 428-ish thousand of casino post-county tax. So, property tax is not everything. I don't think it's probably even quite half of our budget. The next largest category is intergovernmental, and that would be grants or payments we receive from other government entities at 22.7. And those are, those are the largest. And I also included just the departmental revenues, that does not include taxes with the numbers, so you can see what it is by department. And we've talked about the geo bond limitations, our capital improvement program, how we're going to use our fund balance likely over the next several years. But we talked about the targets that we'd like to maintain. But we do have, and this shows 4.1 million of commitments in fiscal, they've already made in fiscal '25. And it's possible that that won't take 4 million of fund balance, particularly the turnover pool. As departments perform better than budget, it might not be quite that much. But those others are firm numbers, so they, I think we, I totally expect to see a reduction in our assigned fund balance this year. We also talked about needing to find a way to fund capital requests that are not eligible for bonding. And so that, this slide shows you the current projections based only on what departments have turned in in their five-year plan. I've gone through it with the bond attorney, and we've pulled out the things that aren't eligible for bonds. And that's what, this is what we will be taking from fund balance over the next several years. We also developed, we have a capital improvement plan, which is gonna require debt service over the next five years. And I will say, this does not include the property and evidence building again, because that was not submitted. So, this includes what the departments turned in earlier this year to be funded. And you can see we're, we're anticipating, we will sell 5 million in bonds this spring. We're guestimating it 4% interest, who knows, hopefully things will be calm. But that is what I used to get to the 20, and I see, I've actually tweaked, whoops, adjusted that racial, that service levy a little bit, because it's 24.05% now. I am predicting again, 5 million to be issued in 2027. And then in, probably in 2028, we would do the road building of 6 million. And then '29, again, I expect that '29 issue may change, but by the time we get there, getting five years out is hard for departments to predict. So, what we have right now there is 3 and a half million. But you can see the levy remains almost flat, and depending on changes on assessed, our taxable value could be even different, so. I've added a slide showing our outstanding debt by June of 2026 would, it basically be the 5 million dollar new issue. That's truly how we share. So, our budget process choices this year, we used all of the 350 general levy that was available to us, and we maximized the employee benefit supplemental levy. We did not add any new positions. Our maintenance department expenses were reduced by 65,000. Sheriff's Office expenses were reduced, reduced by 40. And then we moved also 40,000, so there's two 40s. A portion of patrol vehicle maintenance expenses, we moved to the rural fund, since those vehicles are primarily used by the rural patrol staff. Then we used, it's actually closer to 1.1 million in expected turnover to limit the property taxes and stay at the, what's really $3.46 now. But the, I'm gonna keep saying the 350 cap, because that's the, the cap we're used to. And we talked about the capital projects being funded using either reserves or bonding. And then, and that's really all I had today. I would like to thank the board and all our elected officials and department heads and their staffs who worked on the budget, and especially the board staff, Joe Miller, Cory Wurmers, and Gabby DeWitt. They were all very helpful all through the development, both of the numbers in the process and the presentation today.
Thank you.
I have just one quick question I wanna make sure, you know, stand up for sharing out, the, um, there is the, you know, the, the impact, or the real dollar impact. And also the one that you did at the 120,000 level and the 1, and the 100,000 level.
Yep.
But maybe I'm just kind of missing something in my screen, but one of those percentages still be the same? The percentage of the increase?
Um, I noticed that, I may need to update that on the slide. I'll get that taken care of before we go into it. Some of them will be different though, because like for, for businesses that are taxed differently, they, they do change. But I would have thought the residential's probably should be the same. So it should be at 2.91%.
Okay, okay.
So the one in the, this handout, that's, those are the.
I would stay with that one, yes, and I'll write the one in.
Alright. So, so for sharing somehow, share.
The rest of it.
Don't confuse.
No, because it does get, yeah, same, yeah.
I'll get, I'll send it out to you.
Alright, thank you.
Do we have any public comments or questions? Room or in particular, all live? Um, do we have any comments by the board supervisors?
Yeah, I'll just add my thanks to, especially Michelle, and department heads, all the staff in the board office, and all the staff across the county that worked to make this happen. But, and especially, you know, I guess this is my ninth budget, I guess, so. But there is just increasingly more and more changes at the state level that we have to react to, and that takes a lot of time and research and analysis by Michelle and Tim and others. And I really, really, really appreciate that as we kind of navigate the ever-changing waters that the state delivers us.
I would just tack on that, and thank you for your comments, your introductory ones too, that those were really a great recap of everything, of thanking everyone. But as you said, Chris, I was gonna say, working through that and maneuvering through all the changes that we've had to do. We went from when I started years ago, that, to, we were always done with the budget in February. And so now it's quite the process, and it's extended because of all the different things that we have to work through because of the state caps and changes. And so thank you very much, Michelle, for maneuvering through all of that and coming up with options for us. I think the bonding, as we did several bonding projects this year, able to get so many good things done. Excited to see some of the, even the conservation projects that we were talking about, but all of the, the, and the ARPA projects coming to some conclusions too. And then more renovations that we're trying to look at and trying to go through some of our office issues that weren't covered by ARPA dollars and things, and how we go about that. So, appreciate the staff's patience, their work, and the efforts to get us to where we were. Michelle, yours, getting us to the, we started, I think, even at the end of the process where we thought we were at 4.1%. We've gotten down to the 2.9 now, so hoping that the taxpayers appreciate that in addition to some of the comments they make about some parts of budgeting that they don't appreciate, that they see how hard and how long it takes to work to get them down. And that is our, what we're trying to do. And that is our, what we're trying to do is look out for the taxpayers. Thank you all. Thank you board as well for working through it.
I would just echo the same thing, you know, I came in the middle of all this. And um one, staff, your reports and everything, knowing how hard you guys all worked and knew what we were needing to do and helped us with that. Michelle, all the thousands of questions I've had, trying to learn all this stuff in very, very short time. And quite frankly, need to thank those who came a couple of weeks ago for them. And here and there are concerns. It's one thing to be transparent in what we're trying to do, but it's also them challenging us in some of those questions as well. That helps us make sure we're making the right decisions. It's very difficult trying to move the moving target, like Chris said. That was the most frustrating part of learning this. There's no consistency, and I'm looking back at how these decisions for budgets have been made and to where we're at today. We may not know next year because they're talking about changing the rules again. But uh it's very difficult and I digested as much as I could, as short a period of time as I could, in making this for, making a decision eighteen months ahead. So again, thank you everyone for your part in that. I've got nothing, you guys said it all. I'm just grateful for you guys bearing with me, you know, and hold my hand and guide me along the way, so.
Good process. Do we have a uh motion to close the public hearing, to receive and file uh oral and written? So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, that motion, super carries. Uh resolution, uh that the proposed Blackhawk County budget for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty six be approved and adopted, including total tax askings of thirty eight million, two hundred and eighty five thousand, one hundred and forty eight. So moved.
Second.
This is a resolution, roll call please.
Kurtback.
Yes.
Horace.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Sorry.
Yes.
We all feel that way.
Uh, item I, resolution, uh that the appropriations be approved at one hundred percent of the Blackhawk County budget for the year ending June thirty, twenty twenty six. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, roll call please.
Layland.
Yes.
Kurtback.
Yes.
Horace.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Very good. I entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.